So the, are somatic, afferent voluntary or involuntary?
Aferents are neither, right? That's sensory, so it's either you become aware of it or you don't.
Okay.
Efferent motor, that's voluntary involuntary, right?
Okay.
So autonomic involuntary, somatic voluntary.
Okay.
Or you can think of it in terms of conscious versus subconscious control.
Okay, thank you.
So you're aware of somatic afferent input, you have control over somatic efferent output. Not aware of visceral sensory input unless it has to do with pain or pressure. You have no control or awareness of autonomic output. The gray area is biofeedback, right? By changing your emotional state, you can influence heart rate, right? But you can't just make heart rate go up or down, dilate, constrain blood vessels, or make a glance to create or things like that.
So is that, what do you mean when you say this info, under somatic efferent, is this info is used for involuntary control? Skeletal muscles, I think I'm just a little confused.
Well, when it comes to skeletal muscles, you have voluntary control, but there's plenty of examples of muscles being controlled involuntarily, subconsciously, like reflexes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So there's a couple early slides that provide a nice overview of the nervous system, like this one. Alright, so breaks it down into peripheral versus central. And then peripheral further into sensory versus motor. And then that's broken down into somatic versus visceral. But we don't usually use the term visceral efferent, it's autonomic. You wouldn't be wrong. So in, in, um, chapter 12 spinal cord, we talk about the visceral motor center, or the visceral motor nuclei in the gray matter, that's autonomic. So we, we use them interchangeably. Alright, so there's visceral sensory coming from visceral organ like stomach versus somatic sensory. How do we classify all of the receptors in the skin? Exteroscepters? Referring to the fact that the stimuli they're sensitive to arises in the external environment? How about visceral sensory? So most of our visceral sensory inputs coming from interoceptors. Most if not all of it. Alright, what type of neuron provides sensory input? Somatic sensory input, not special senses, just general senses. Structural type? Because functional is sensory, right? But what's the structural?
Unipolar.
Unipolar.
Yeah.
And so what's forming our general senses receptors? What part of that unipolar neuron?
Receptive endings?
The receptive endings. Which the book labels as dendrites, functionally they are dendrites. But they're not a process off the body, so I don't like to call them dendrites. Dendrite means spine or process, and those are, those are coming off the body. So how is the receptive ending and the dendrite and the cell body for that matter similar? What are they all doing that's, that's similar? Which do they all have that's similar? What they're all doing generating graded potentials, so what do they all have?
Ligon.
Either ligand gated ion channels or mechanically gated. Right, so what would be an example of sensory endings that have mechanically gated ion channels? Pychine corpuscle, Weizner's corpuscle. So some of those nerve endings are encapsulated and some are unencapsulated or free. We'll talk more about that in chapter 13.
Is there thermoreceptors that are free?
Which ones?
Thermoreceptors?
For the most part thermo and, and, uh, pain, nociceptors, pain. Thermoreceptors. So you've got tons of receptors detecting all sorts of stimuli in the skin. Those are all exteroceptors. And then interoceptors in the ventral body cavity. But then between the ventral body cavity and all the visceral organs, we have interoceptors. And the skin, you have another group, the third group of receptors. And they're in the muscles, the tendons, the joints. What they provide you are, you're aware of, so it is somatic. Proprioceptors. And what is it that you're aware of? What is the, the sensation? Spatial awareness of body parts, right? So you can close your eyes and move your body parts around, you know where they are. You can touch your finger to your nose without using your, your vision. That's based on proprioception. So after the intro, we moved on to the, the tissue itself, nervous tissue, glial cells, six of them. Four in the CNS, two in the PNS, and then the neuron. And then what's the function of the dendrites, the cell body? Just, just to recap. Generating graded potentials, uh, function of axon. Function of axon terminals. And what triggers the release of neurotransmitter? The trigger?
The trigger of, of action potential?
The action potential.
Yeah.
So when you describe the signaling that's carried out by neurons, it's not just electrical signaling, it's not just chemical signaling, it's both. Right, the electrical signal, the action potential travels down the axon to trigger the release of chemical messengers. So neurons use electrochemical signaling to do their job. And what's their job? Nervous system as a whole, endocrine system for that matter as well. What, what do those systems do? What do endocrine cells do and neurons do? Control the activities of other cells. And, and how they do it is similar, what do they both do? Release chemical messengers. And if they use the bloodstream to reach their target, they're a hormone. They cross a synaptic cleft, it's a neurotransmitter. But you'll see later, next semester, that you have neurons that secrete hormones. The chemicals they release don't cross the synaptic cleft, they go into the bloodstream. And we'll call those neurohormones to be specific. And we'll call the neurons neurosecretory cells. So enough about next semester. So we connected those three structural classes to the, the three functional classes. Multipolar, bipolar, unipolar. So unipolar sensory, bipolar sensory but special senses, multipolar motor neurons and interneurons. And then looking at motor neurons, it's really just two pipes. You have the ones that go directly to skeletal muscle. You have others that go to smooth mu- uh, smooth muscle cardiac muscle glands. But it takes two neurons to get there. And what do you call the first neuron in this two neuron chain? Pre-ganglionic? And the second one? And where's the ganglion? Between them. It's referring to the cluster of cell bodies belonging to the post-ganglionic. And then we can connect this to the end of chapter 11. What's the neurotransmitter released by all pre-ganglionic autonomic neurons? And what receptor is it binding to on the dendrites and cell body of the post-ganglionic neurons? So in a general sense, we can call them ACH receptors or cholinergic receptors, but we had a way to distinguish, there's two types of cholinergic receptors. Nicotinic and muscarin. And the ones found here? Nicotinic? So this means acetylcholine binding to nicotinic ACH or cholinergic receptors. So that happens here. What's released from the post-ganglionic apex? Sympathetic or parasympathetic? If it's sympathetic, nor up enough. What if it's parasympathetic? Acetylcholine again. But now what receptor is it binding to? Muscarin and ACH receptors. So from the end of chapter 11, you needed to know the names, uh, you need to know, present day. You need to know the names of the classes, and acetylcholine was a class in another cell. And whatever information I provide about each class. The most you need to know is about ACH, and as I go through the classes, it becomes less and less. Like for amino acids, all you need to know are two examples. And the fact that one's excitatory, one's inhibitory, that's it. And what's the excitatory one?
Glutamate.
Glutamate? And the inhibitory? So why are we calling glutamate excitatory? What does it do that makes it qualified to be called excitatory? So it's not the mechanism of action, although it could be direct or indirect. What is it that it's doing that makes it excitatory? It's opening channels that must be allowing sodium influx. Either a sodium channel, channel specific to sodium, or the kind you saw at the neuromuscular junction. Non-selective katerin. So it's either selective for sodium, or it's non-selective, in which case sodium and potassium go through. Well, what's going to be the end result? We open a non-selective. Way more sodium's going to come in than potassium's going to go out. Why?
Electrochemical signal.
Is. Very strong for sodium, very weak for potassium. And that's kind of where I want to start with our physiology. Is electrochemical gradients, equilibrium potentials. Making sure you understand resting membrane potential, then move on to graded action. So what we saw at neuromuscular junction, it was kind of arbitrary, but we said like a 10 to 1 ratio of sodium influx to potassium influx. So action potential comes down the axon, hits the terminal, opens voltage gated calcium channels. How do we know calcium's going to go in? Two reasons. Yeah, so break that down. The electrical gradient?
Like Edwards?
Directed in. Because the inside is negative and calcium's positive. Any other reason we know it wants to go in? How do we know it's more concentrated out than in?
Cause of the direction of where it's flowing.
It's the other way around. We know the direction is in because we know it's more concentrated out. How do we know that? How do we know that calcium has to be kept extremely low inside of a muscle cell, inside of an axon terminal?
If calcium's present, that means.
Because if it's available in the muscle cell, it'll contract. If it's available in the axon terminal, it will secrete. It's a, it's an intracellular chemical messenger. It's a second messenger in fact, an important one, right up there with cyclic AMP. So we can't let this second messenger just be lingering around inside the cell, it's going to trigger something. So calcium is always super low inside of cells. It's in there, it's just not free in the cytosol. Where is it? What container is housing our calcium? In any cell. Any cell. Yes, in the muscle cell, we call it sarcoplasmic particulum, but really that's just a modified what? Endoplasmic particulum, smooth specifically. So smooth ER, and every cell houses calcium. And the muscle cell, it's designed specifically for release and restoring, right? For contraction, to control contraction, it's part of EC coupling. How do we know that sodium is high outside of cells, low inside? And at the same time, how do we know that potassium is high inside and low out?
Because of the charges.
Because all cells have what? In their membrane, sodium potassium pumps running 24/7 and that's their job. Keep sodium high out, low in, potassium high in, low out. So what is the voltage of the motor input? The neuron, negative 70. About from the muscle cell. Yeah. So when we open a, a non-selective channel, sodium is coming in and potassium is going out. How do we know there's going to be way more sodium coming in? We're pretty far from sodium's equilibrium potential, which is? And we're pretty close to potassium's, which is? So for the muscle cell at rest, voltage of the membrane at the end, at rest, right, minus 85. Pretty close to minus 94, very little potassium going out. Not because the membrane's not permeable to it, it is, there's just not much force acting on it. In fact, how much potassium would move across the membrane if the voltage was minus 94 instead of minus 85? Not, you'd be at that particular ion's equilibrium potential. And the rule is whichever ion the membrane is most permeable to, the membrane at rest will be closest to that ion's electrochemical gradient, or equilibrium potential. And there's a little virtual experiment that we walked through to prove that. You take a cell with a membrane that's not permeable to any ions. In order to have a membrane potential, no voltage at rest, equal numbers of positive and negative charges on both sides. But we do have concentration gradients. We're going to go ahead and open channels for a particular ion, potassium. What happens? It starts moving down its electrochemical gradient, which at the moment is just a concentration or chemical gradient, right? There is no electrical gradient, not yet. But then as soon as potassium starts leaving, what happens to the interior? Starts becoming negative, we develop an electrical gradient, an electrical force. And what happens to that force as more and more potassium leaves? It's stronger and stronger and stronger, because the inside's becoming more and more negative. So it started at zero, then it's minus five, minus 10, minus 50, minus 20, minus 30, minus 40. At what point does the electrical force match the chemical force in the opposite direction? When it hits negative 94, so we go, okay, that must be the equilibrium potential. Cause now there's no net movement of that ion. Now if we start opening some channels for sodium, which way is it going to move? And what's going to happen to the value which right now is negative 94? It's going to become more positive. Maybe minus 85, maybe minus 70. And that's what we see in the neuron and the muscle cell. So between those two cells, which one has more leak channels for sodium? The one that's more positive. It's gotta be the neuron. What if the neuron had just as many leak channels for sodium as it does potassium? Where would that resting membrane potential be? Somewhere between plus 65 and minus 94. But the fact that all of our resting membrane potentials are pretty close to minus 94 relative to plus 65 tells us that membranes are way more permeable to potassium at rest than sodium. And what accounts for that? More channels, about 25 times more leak channels for potassium compared to sodium. So at rest, the membrane is permeable to various ions, but by far it's most permeable to potassium. And that's why RMP's resting membrane potentials are pretty close to minus 94. So then you apply this to a graded potential. So you've got your electrode in the membrane of say a dendrite, a cell body. And whenever we're looking at action potentials, resting membrane potential, graded potential, what's on the Y axis? So you could say membrane potential or membrane voltage. It is a form of potential energy, it's, it's measured in millivolts, so we're talking about the same thing. Millivolts are the units. So capital B voltage, subscript M, membrane, membrane voltage in millivolts, and then X axis? Time in milliseconds? So if we're seeing the membrane hovering around rest, and then all of a sudden the voltage becomes more negative, what must have happened? It's called hyperpolarization, but what must have happened? We must have just made the membrane more permeable to potassium, or potentially chloride. And if it's chloride, chloride comes in, negative makes the inside more negative than it already was. Or if it's potassium, it goes out, also making the inside more negative than it all already was. Hyperpolarization. Now, if this is happening at the dendrites, the cell body, and it's the post-synaptic cell, two cells communicating, this is the post-synaptic cell, then what do we call that hyperpolarization that just happened?
Inhibitory postsynaptic?
IPSB. We're at the postsynaptic cell, it's a postsynaptic potential that's being generated by opening channels. And it's inhibitory. And why are, why are we calling it inhibitory when we see hyperpolarization? Cause that postsynaptic cell is being prevented from generating an action potential. So this would be the pre-synaptic cell in this scenario, and this would be the postsynaptic cell. We're looking at postsynaptic potentials occurring at that postsynaptic cell, the dendrites, the cell body. Would it be glutamate or GABA that would open channels that would create an IPSB?
GABA.
GABA. And GABA's known for opening chloride channels in particular. What has to happen in order to repolarize? Go back to that. Do we need to open something? All you have to do is close the channels that we opened to bring the membrane away from rest in the first place. So any deviation from rest is either a graded potential or an action potential. How do you know which it's going to be? Depends on the channels. If we're opening voltage gated, it's going to be an action potential. Cause it's going to propagate. It's knocking the first domino down, right? And all of them are going to fall. But if it's a graded potential, it's just ligand or mechanically gated ion channels. If we open a lot, we get a big graded potential. If we open, here we get a small one. The voltage gated channels, they open or they don't. There isn't, you know, a lot or a little or anything like that. So we describe the action potentials being all or none. So if it was glutamate, an excitatory neurotransmitter, we would consider the whole synapse to be excitatory. And what type of the synapse is this between the axon terminal and the body right here? Axosomatic. How about between an axon terminal and a dendrite? Axodendritic? And you're going to see both. The pre-synaptic cell typically is going to form both axo-dendritic and axosomatic synapses. Now, if you have multiple axon terminals from the same or different pre-synaptic neurons, all releasing neurotransmitter at the same time, what kind of summation does that result in? A bunch of different synapses active at the same time. Spatial. So you're looking at the net graded potential produced at that moment. If you look at it over time, and maybe we're looking at the same synapse over the course of 200 milliseconds. And it releases, and it releases, and it releases. And the graded potential builds stronger, 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 then what type of summation are we talking about? Temporal, right, over time. And in the end, we have both. You know, putting it all together, we have IPSBs and EPSBs, and we have both temporal summation and spatial summation. We just have to add it all up and see what the net result is. And that's what the information processing refers to in this diagram. And in the end, it's all for what? To see if that postsynaptic neuron becomes excited or not, fires an action potential or not. Questions so far? Which ions responsible for the resting membrane potential? How do you know? The resting membrane potential is really close to that ion's equilibrium potential. Structurally, what causes this? Way more leak channels for potassium than any other ion. So during the graded potential, during the action potential, those leak channels are still open, right? So to depolarize, you just have to bring enough sodium in to compensate, more than compensate for the potassium going out. When during an action potential do we have the most potassium efflux? Alright, what was the answer? What's going on at peak?
The highest efflux, or efflux. It can be the highest efflux of potassium. Oh, hyperpolarization. No, it's reflux.
Is it covered up? That works, I'll leave it like that. Not quite. So during repol, right? So at this point where permeability to potassium is added to peak, why is that, what accounts for that? All the leak channels are open, because they always are, plus the all of the voltage gated potassium channels are open too. So when you have the greatest permeability, you're going to have the greatest potassium efflux. The only thing that could increase potassium efflux on top of opening more channels is what? There's two things that determine the rate at which an ion moves across the membrane. In this case, we're talking potassium efflux. The number of channels, it's at a maximum. What's the other thing that determines how much movement we're going to get? The force acting on this ion. Right, they're equally important. You can have a huge force, but no channels open, so it can't move. You can have a bazillion channels open, no force, it won't move. You've got to have both. The membrane has to be permeable to the ion, and then there has to be a net force acting on that ion. What's happening to that net force as we continue to repolarize? As the membrane becomes more and more negative, what's happening to the ECG for potassium? It's getting weaker and weaker, right? Because you're getting closer and closer to its equilibrium potential. So the highest we're going to see is during repol, the highest rate of potassium efflux. And that's why the slope is so steep, right, it's flying up. Over time, we're getting a huge movement of potassium. What's happening to the slope, though, as we get closer and closer to minus ninety-four? It starts to flatten out, right, the rate at which potassium leaves starts to go down for two reasons, why? So the channels are closing, permeability is going down. If permeability goes down, then efflux goes down. And the ECG is getting weaker, right? As we get closer and closer to minus ninety-four, the net force is getting weaker. Makes sense? During depolarization, what accounts for that steep rise? Very steep slope, almost straight up. When we open those gated channels for sodium, by how much are we increasing the permeability to sodium? Thousand times. So there must be a thousand times more channels open now than at rest. Combine that with a really strong ECG, and it goes flying out. But what would happen to that slope as we continue to depolarize? It would start to flatten out. And what's the highest that thing could possibly go? Because what happens at plus sixty-five? The electrical gradient now is just as strong as the concentration gradient, they're in opposite directions, the ion stops moving. Right? If you're still not clear on that, the best way to work with it are with the depictions, the arrows. You can do three different voltages. You can do minus eighty, zero, plus eighty, we're just looking at potassium. Arrow for concentration gradient, is it directed in or out? Always out. Concentration of potassium, always high inside, always very low outside. Doesn't matter what the voltage is, concentration has no relationship with voltage. So how long should I make the arrow for concentration gradient here and here? Exactly the same, right? All we're doing is changing the voltage, we're not changing the concentration. And even when potassium leaves, we're not changing the overall concentration. And that's because such a small amount is leaving relative to how much is actually there. And we're talking point zero, 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 keep going, zero, zero, one percent, something like that. Negligible. It would take hours, days of these channels being open, potassium leaving, no pumps on, to lose that gradient. Which is a reminder, that's the whole job of the pumps, to keep that concentration gradient stable over time. So what is changing? The electrical gradient. In or out? Well, instead of keeping the information in your head, the best thing to do is just go ahead and illustrate. So if we have a negative eighty, that means the inside is negative relative to the outside. And potassium is a cation, right, so it's directed in. Over here, zero millivolts. No separation of charge, equal numbers of charges on both sides. So what does the electrical gradient look like for potassium? Same as here? There is none. Because the voltage is zero, there is no electrical gradient. How about over here? How about the size of the arrow, the length, same as what I have over here or different? And now I need to make the inside positive. That's what the sign is telling me. Now the outside's negative. So it's directed out, right? Exactly the same size, how do you know? It's the same strength, eighty. The sign has nothing to do with the strength of the voltage, it just tells you what the interior is relative to the exterior. Here it's negative, here it's positive, but the voltage is identical, it's eighty. The direction has changed. So then you add them together to figure out the net force, the electrochemical gradient. Here, they're in opposite directions, I have to take the difference. So it's directed out. And again, this is all for potassium. Here, it's directed out, and it's exactly the same length as my concentration gradient arrow, because I have nothing to add or subtract. And here, they're in the same direction, so I add them together. So another rule is, the further we get from an ion's equilibrium potential, stronger, the greater the electrochemical gradient. So here, we're only fourteen millivolts away. Now we're ninety-four millivolts away. So what if we make it plus one hundred and eighty, plus two eighty, plus three eighty, it's just getting stronger and stronger and stronger. And I should probably do one on the other side, too. About minus one eighty. Concentration gradient's the same, right? Which way is the electrical gradient direct? Strong or weak? Super strong, very, very negative. So the net force? The difference between them, we can have a lot of potassium coming in. Of course, our rule of thumb is potassium always leaves. Why are we not going to see this happen? We're not going to see voltages more negative than minus ninety-four, we're not going to see minus one eighty. But experimentally, you can make the voltage whatever you want, so you can make ions go any direction you want. Which example are you at?
Like the gates open up when it's to repolarize, right? So it's XK, and that's bringing in more negative. So in that situation, why is this, why is something that is more negative than the resting membrane potential creating a negative, a net negative?
So let me get rid of this stuff. So you're referring to the action potential as we repolarize and then hyperpolarize? Why is potassium leaving the whole time? So remember, the equilibrium potential is way down here, minus ninety-four, we don't get that far. We might hit minus eighty, minus eighty-five, but we're not going to hit minus ninety-four. So as long as you're more positive than minus ninety-four, which way is potassium going to go? Out. So let me give you three voltages. Minus ninety-five, minus ninety-four, minus ninety-three. In all three cases, the interior is negative relative to the exterior. Concentration gradient for potassium never changes. Alright, electrical gradient at minus ninety-four, which is again way down here, below anything we reach during the action potential. So what should I draw for my electrical gradient arrow? At minus ninety-four millivolts. I'm not asking for electrochemical gradient. Just electrical gradient, I've got my concentration, and then I'm going to add my electrical, then we can look at the total. Same, and put the direction? So potassium's positive, it's attracted to the negative interior. And we know the strength is exactly equal to the strength of the concentration gradient, because minus ninety-four happens to be the equilibrium potential. So it's like a plus two and a minus two, you add them together, you get nothing. The electrochemical gradient is zero. So there would be no movement of potassium at this point. If we're at any voltage other than the ion's equilibrium potential, it's going to move. And then all we need to know is, is it more negative or more positive than that equilibrium potential? And then we can figure out the direction. At minus ninety-five, is the electrical gradient now stronger or weaker than the concentration? We made it a little more negative, and it's going to pull that positive ion in with a little more strength. So yes, it's a little bit longer, now I can take the difference. Super weak, but there is one, and it's directed in, right? Potassium would actually start coming inside. But again, we're not going to see this, because we're not going to see voltages more negative than about minus eighty-five, maybe minus ninety. How about over here? It's going out. So I need to make my electrical gradient just a tad weaker. So at the peak, and it's not that the peak triggers this to happen, it's just when it happens over time. At about point five to one millisecond, after we reach threshold, we hit peak, and that's about how long it takes for the inactivation gates to close on the sodium channels. It's also how long it takes for the potassium channels to open. So potassium starts leaving, and that's why the voltage starts becoming more and more negative. At what point does potassium stop leaving the cell? Think about it. During the action potential, does potassium stop leaving the cell at any point? No, it's always leaving. It's either leaving just through leak channels, or it's leaving through leak channels plus, in this case, gated channels during repol and hyperpol. But it's always leaving. But is the same amount leaving, is it leaving at the same rate? No. It's going to be leaving faster when we're up here than when we're down here. Because up here, we're pretty far away from minus ninety-four, so the electrochemical gradient's pretty darn strong. But as we approach minus ninety-four, it's getting weaker and weaker and weaker. But we're not going to hit minus ninety-four, so it's still leaving. And then how come less is now leaving, bringing us back up to minus seventy? What's happening in here? They're finally closing. Those voltage gated potassium channels are slow to open and slow to close. So slow to open is what delays the beginning of repol, so it doesn't happen at threshold. Threshold triggers the potassium channels to open, but there's a delay. That gives us time for sodium influx first. Does it make any more sense? And the template is, channels, opening or closing, changes permeability. Permeability changes the rate at which ions move across the membrane. Ions moving across the membrane changes the voltage of the membrane. Those are the four things you need to address when you're describing any phase of a graded potential or an action potential. So when I'm explaining this, I would start with, a graded potential reaches the axon hilac, or initial segment if it's unipolar, bringing the voltage from rest to threshold, triggering three events. The first event, and these are in no particular order, they're all triggered at the same time. But the first one you would want to mention is activation gates, right? The activation gates on the sodium channels open immediately. The inactivation gates slowly are closing, but very slowly, relative to what the activation gates have done, immediate open. Right, so that's this analogy where this room is the channel, and as long as one door is closed, nobody can get through the room, across the membrane. And this, what gate would this be if this is what it's like at rest? That's closed, this is open, so which gate is this? So we hit threshold, that door swings open, and this door is doing this. And then people are jamming through, in the meantime, you've got about point five to one millisecond until this thing closes. And right about the time this closes, voltage gated potassium channels. So I'll write it out. At threshold. you get immediate opening of activation gates of your voltage gated sodium channels. Alright, and that leads to increased permeability of the membrane. Not increased permeability of sodium. Permeability refers to the membrane, not the ion.
Wouldn't you say before threshold would be initial segment?
So when we're looking at a graph of an action potential, we have to have an electrode in the membrane somewhere on the neuron. And it's either going to be at the axon hilac or the initial segment. Right, if it's unipolar, nothing is coming off of the body, out of the neuron. Well, yeah, I mean, there's a process, but it splits into two parts. And that's just one big long axon, terminals at one end, receptive endings at the other. Something like this. And if these are the axon terminals, there's your direction. Then these are the receptive endings, and that's the initial segment. Functionally, it's the equivalent of the axon hilac, right? But that's something that comes off of the body, it's kind of triangular shape. So in a unipolar neuron, this is where the AP begins. That's where the electrode would be if we were to measure formation of the AP. And if it's multipolar, we're going to start with the axon hilac. But functionally, they do the same thing. It's where the graded potentials have gone, and either they will spark an action potential, or they're going to inhibit one. So we've increased permeability to sodium a lot. Huge increase, thousand times greater than what it is at rest. So that little bit of sodium influx that we see at rest now turns into a flooding across the membrane. So it's not that sodium influx now starts, it's always happening. There's always sodium coming in, there's always potassium going out because of leak channels. Relatively speaking, it's a lot of potassium out, very little sodium in. Right, and then the pumps return those ions to where they came from. So following the template, channels lead to changes in permeability, leads to changes in movement of the ion. And then, it's directional, we need to know which way they're going, so we can use influx, eflux. And then that leads to a change in the voltage of the membrane as ions move across it. Right, that's the electricity we're measuring in millivolts. And you would say the VM, the membrane voltage or potential is becoming more what?
Positive.
Positive. And that is depolarization. Second thing triggered, delayed closure of inactivation gates of your voltage gated sodium channels. And that leads to how much is it going to go down? We're going to reverse the increase, and if it went up a thousand, it's going to go down a thousand. It's the same channels that opened were now closing. And that leads to and that leads to
The membrane's voltage adopts getting positive or?
Yep. This isn't going to make it more negative, it's just going to stop it from depolarizing further. A VM stops becoming more positive to end depole. That's all we're explaining, is why we stop at plus three. So we have to explain two things here. Why has it stopped here, and then why do we immediately now start repolarizing? Delayed opening of voltage gated potassium channels. Leads to
Increased permeability flux.
Increased permeability to potassium. It was already permeable, the membrane has a lot of leak channels, we've made it even more permeable. Oops, wrong way.
Increases sodium, or, uh, potassium.
Increases potassium eflux. Making the membrane voltage called repole. So we've explained depole, and then repole, and then that leaves hyperpole. And that's just continuing what we have here under number three. They're not only delayed in their opening, they're also delayed in their closing. Delayed closure of voltage gated potassium channels leads to hyperpole. So during hyperpole, what is the permeability look like?
Elevated above resting conditions.
Yep. So PK remains elevated. This is all relative to resting condition. Therefore
That makes it the membrane
Potassium eflux remains high, remains elevated. Making the membrane voltage what?
More negative than rest.
Yep. That's it. Now, we described how depole ends with the closure of the voltage gated sodium channels, how does hyperpole end?
All of the channels.
You could say all, that's true. But we ended depole with closure of the voltage gated sodium channels, so we're going to end hyperpole with closure of the voltage gated potassium channels.
And where are those triggers to close, is there a delay on those also?
Yep.
And should we specify the closure of the voltage gated channels?
As opposed to
All, all remaining channels?
But the only ones that are
The leak channels are
You don't have to mention leak, exactly. So all you have are those voltage gated.
Okay.
And this illustrates propagation. Now if we started in the middle of the axon, put an electrode there, applied a depolarizing stimulus, bringing the membrane to threshold, we would generate an action potential that would spread to the left, and it would spread to the right. Here, at the initial segment, there are no voltage gated ion channels to the left, only to the right. So technically, when it originates here, it could spread in both directions, but it's unable to spread to the left if we don't have the right channel type there. So it can only spread to the right. So then the question is, once it spreads to the right, and segment two depolarizes, and those voltage gated sodium channels open, sodium comes across, spreads to the left, spreads to the right, it's going to spread in all directions along the interior. It depolarizes segment three and generates an AP there. How come when it spreads to the left, it doesn't generate an AP here to segment one?
It's an absolute refractory here.
Because segment one is an absolute refractory. So that makes sure that propagation is unidirectional. Does that make sense? But if you started in the middle, that wouldn't be the case. It would spread in both directions.
Is that like an axo-axonic?
No, just experimentally, you'd have to, artificial with an electrode. Alright, so explain absolute refractory, what's going on? So for the first part of absolute, you can't generate another AP because the channels you need to open are already open, right? How about the second part of absolute?
You have to wait until, I don't know, the channels are reset, so actually thinking this will be an activation.
So everything in green is absolute, so from here to here, the very channels we're trying to open are open. They're closing here, yet we're still in the green, so we get from here. So from here to here, the reason we cannot generate another AP is because there's not enough voltage gated sodium channels reset. So when they're closed and incapable of being opened, what does the activation gate look like? Activation gate. Channels closed and incapable of being opened, what does the activation gate look like in that case? It is open. And the inactivation gate?
Closed.
It's closed. And as long as one gate is closed, the channel is closed. But the reason we can't open the channel in that state is because the very gate that we open by reaching threshold is open already, the activation. So we have to wait. We have to wait for the activation gate to close, and the inactivation gate to reopen. Then we can go ahead and stimulate the channel to open again. Takes time. So we need at least half, so we think based on this line, which is going to happen somewhere in here. So okay, now we're out of absolute, we're into relative. Why do we need a supra-threshold stimulus? It's one thing to have half of your voltage gated sodium channels, but it's only half, it's not all of them. Normally, you have all. So one issue that you're facing is, you don't have all of your voltage gated sodium channels reset. So basically, from here to here, you would say not enough have reset, so we're in absolute. From here to here, enough have reset, but we don't have all of them. We don't have all of our voltage gated sodium channels available. Now, here we do, yet we're still in relative refractory. So what's the other issue that we're still waiting on?
Potassium.
We're waiting on this voltage gated potassium channels to close. Bringing permeability back to resting levels for potassium. In turn, bringing potassium eflux back to resting levels. So resting levels, we have a lot of leak channels for potassium, it's constantly leaking out. We're going to have to have a graded potential that's strong enough to overcome that and still depolarize the membrane to threshold. We still need that fifteen millivolt EPSP to come along. But during relative refractory, that's not going to be enough, we need supra-threshold. One, because we don't have all of our voltage gated sodium channels reset. But the longer we wait, the more we have, the less supra-threshold that stimulus has to be. The other two things that are improving with time, accounting for the reduction in the size of the supra-threshold stimulus required. More and more voltage gated potassium channels are closing. So here's their peak opening. As we come down this curve, fewer and fewer are open, less and less potassium is leaving, making it easier and easier to depolarize the membrane. Reducing the size of that supra-threshold stimulus. The other issue we have in here, we're not starting from rest. So even if we didn't have the other two issues, even if we didn't have to compensate for all the potassium leaving, and we didn't have to compensate for having not all of our voltage gated sodium channels, we still have to compensate for the fact that we're not starting at minus seventy and going to minus fifty-five. We're starting to say minus eighty, minus eighty-five, and going all the way up to minus fifty-five. So in the end, you have two issues for absolute, three for relative. Alright, so what is the whole point of relative refractory? What does it allow us to do? It ensures that a larger graded potential, a supra-threshold graded potential, will result in a higher frequency of action potentials. And that's known as rate coding. That allows the brain to interpret the stimulus as being stronger. We need to make sure that a bigger graded potential results in some change that the brain can interpret as a bigger stimulus. And we can't change the size of the action potential, so that's not going to work. The only thing we can change is the frequency. And for that to make sense, you have to remember that we're never just generating an action potential. We're always generating trains of action potentials, one after the next, after the next, after the next. And so then the question is, what's the frequency? As all these action potentials are coming down the axon. So you push on the Purkinian corpuscle a little bit, you open some mechanically gated ion channels. You generate a relatively weak graded potential, called a receptor potential, if we're at a receptor. And that's going to generate not a small action potential, but action potentials at relatively low frequency. Now where are those action potentials going? Where in the brain? So we're connecting chapter eleven and chapter twelve here. So one day I don't have my good mask. Purkinian corpuscles, Meisner's corpuscles. When we stimulate those receptors, where's that information going? Where in the CNS? Get real specific.
Are you talking about like regions of the brain?
Oh yeah.
Oh, okay.
Where in the parietal?
Primary, or association sensory?
First stop, first stop.
Primary somatosensory cortex.
Good. Primary somatosensory cortex.
Post-central gyrus.
Post-central gyrus of the parietal. Good. So then you push harder on that same Purkinian corpuscle. You generate a bigger graded potential, called a receptor potential based on location. It reaches the initial segment of this unipolar neuron. Again, doesn't generate a bigger AP, generates consecutive APs at a higher frequency. And as the higher frequency APs arrives at the somatosensory cortex, it's interpreted as a stronger stimulus, more pressure. So in the end, the whole point of graded potentials is to generate action potentials if they're excitatory, right? Or potentially inhibit them with IPSBs. We're not going to see the IPSBs at receptors, that's something between a pre and a post synaptic cell. At our receptors, it's always going to be excitatory. It's just a question of how strong is the stimulus? We have to have a way of perceiving a weak versus a strong stimulus, it's rate coding.
If IPSBs are only between pre and post?
So one neuron communicating with another, yes.
And then EPSBs are with the target cell?
And, well, both EPSBs and IPSBs are generated from a pre-synaptic neuron at the post. But then if you're looking at a receptor, right, just the beginning of a neuron, not one communicating with another, just the receptive endings of one, it's just going to be excitatory. But we don't even use the term post-synaptic potential, because it's not a post-synaptic cell. So EPSBs, IPSBs, those are only between two neurons communicating. So EPSBs, IPSBs, those are only between two neurons communicating. Alright, so how are graded potentials different than action potentials? See how many reasons you can come up with, or differences, I should say.
Graded potentials are used in dendrites and the cell of the body, action potentials are mainly in the lock. And they're different channels.
So dendrites or receptive endings, that's where we get our graded potentials. Axon, all parts, right? Starts at the hilak or initial segment, goes down the entire length of the axon, the axon terminals. When the axon begins to split up at the end, what are those called? Terminal branches, also called, another T word. Telodendria. The axon terminal itself, yeah, it's got like a dozen different names, synaptic bulbs, neuropods, end bulbs. There's a lot of weird names for that one. How about ions themselves? What ions are involved in graded potentials?
I think every day in my head I would say sodium every time.
Potassium, what else, graded potentials? Sodium, which way? How about action potential, what ions are involved? How we repolarize is different. With the graded potential, it's simply closing the channels that created the graded potential in the first place. Versus in the action potential, how do we repolarize?
Closing, activating.
By opening voltage gated potassium channels. So why is it we don't actually have to do that and the membrane will still repolarize? Because of all the leak channels, potassium's still gonna leave, it just won't leave as quickly. So that repolarization phase would be a whole lot slower. And that would reduce the frequency of the action potentials that we could achieve, right? They'd be pretty low. But we wanna speed things up so we can reach really high frequencies. So each action potential is over and done with in just a few milliseconds. And really, the bulk of the time for the action potential is the hyperpolarization phase. Here it's only a couple milliseconds, but it can last 10, 15, 20 milliseconds in some neurons. Whereas the depole is always .5 to 1, and the repole is always .5 to 1. That's the quick part. But that allows us, again, to reach really high frequencies, because we can cut into hyperpole, right? We can really start the next AP right at the end of repole if we want to, we just need our supra, supra threshold stimulus. You can use the term size or strength or, you know, graded. It's variable for the graded potential, variable strength. Always same strength for action potential, considered all or none. Happens or it doesn't, but there's not a small one or a big one, or a strong one, weak one, or anything like that. All or none.
The graded potential also decays, whereas action potential doesn't, it's a propagation.
So graded potential decays over distance. The stronger it is, the further it goes. Versus action potential is propagated. No decay. It is a little misleading however, because the action potential that we describe as being propagated or conducted along an axon, it's not as though it's one. It's a lot of action potentials. Each one is like a local graded potential in a way, it spreads a certain distance. But the way the axons are set up, we can guarantee that before it dissipates completely, it'll reach the next batch of voltage gated ion channels and will be strong enough to open them. There is something that can take away that guarantee, it's a disorder, a disease state. So what's going on that is kind of taking away that guarantee, like, well, maybe it won't make it now. Loss of myelin. If we lose myelin, then yeah, propagation's gonna be affected, it will decay, it's not gonna make it. So here's a nice comparison between myelinated axons, where you have a pretty big distance between groups of voltage gated ion channels, and non-myelinated, very short distance in between. And by the time the local current, that one action potential, spreads a millimeter or so to the right, it'll be sure to depolarize the membrane of the threshold to open the next voltage gated sodium channel, followed by potassium, of course, depole, repole. Whereas you take the myelin away, it goes the same distance, dissipates. Right, it's not gonna make it over here without the insulation.
So for the propagation, there's two different types of propagation, for saltatory and then like antigous. I basically just understand one's myelinated and one's not, is there anything else to?
That's right, saltatory is describing the action potential as jumping from node to node. Kind of is, but it's internal, of course, it's a sodium current that's spreading along the axon. And it can spread a lot further with insulation. Otherwise you lose the current across the membrane, but the insulation's gonna prevent that, it's gonna go further. So which axons have more voltage gated ion channels, myelinated or unmyelinated? Unmyelinated have way more. What's the consequence of opening more voltage gated ion channels along the length of our axon? Why, why does it cost more? It is, it's more costly, not monetarily, but.
You're using more ions? No, nevermind.
You are.
Yeah, but.
They have to go back to where they came from. So the more voltage gated sodium and potassium channels you open, the more pumping you're gonna have to do to return those ions to where they came from. And that costs ATP. Right, you're gonna need more sodium potassium pumps to move more ions back to where they came from. What's the other downside to an unmyelinated axon? It's more costly, and it's slower. So why in the heck would we have any unmyelinated axons if it's more costly and slower? Takes up a lot less space. That myelin's pretty thick. And you're not gonna be able to bundle a whole lot of myelinated fibers together. It would create a really large nerve, we don't have space in the body for nerves that big. And tracts that big. So what type of information is reserved for the type A fibers, the biggest, fastest, most myelinated fibers? Somatic sensory, somatic motor. Now when you look at type A versus B versus C, there were two things listed twice. Pain and temperature. So it turns out type A and type C fibers conduct both pain and temperature information. So for the type A, the faster, think of it as acute injury or damage. Causing acute pain, something that's new. And you need to know about that as quickly as possible, like putting your hand on the stove top, and you want that withdrawal reflex to kick in before you burn yourself. So a few milliseconds in that case does make a difference, it's protective. So we want the somatic sensory information coming in to travel as quickly as possible. We want the motor response, the motor signals going out along those lower motor neurons as quickly as possible. So we use type A. Chronic pain, old pain information, just like, yep, the pain's still there, yep, the pain's still there. Nothing new, that travels along type C fibers. Now even within those three main groups, A, B, and C, there are subgroups, like A alpha and A delta, right, the two extremes. So how about visceral sensory and visceral motor, also called autonomic motor, where, which fibers? Bs and Cs. So that frequency coding that I was referring to, that's exactly what they're illustrating. Subthreshold stimulus, no action potential. Threshold, you get an action potential. Supra threshold, action potential's not any bigger, same amplitude, hits 30, you just get them at a higher frequency. That's the point, rate coding. Works for the motor system too. We saw that back in chapter nine. Action potentials come down the lower motor neurons at higher and higher frequencies to recruit bigger and bigger motor units. So frequency for both sensory and motor pathways reflects intensity. Any other differences between graded and action? How about summation? Do you see summation in graded potentials?
No.
About action potentials? What prevents summation in action potentials? Absolute refractory period. Right, you can't build on the previous depolarization phase, not like a muscle twitch where you can build on the previous contraction phase. So at a minimum, you know you're gonna repolarize almost all the way to rest, right, before the next AP can be generated. Anything else from chapter 11? There's probably more differences. Oh, I know what one is. I'll just say type. Excitatory graded potential, or inhibitory. Action potentials, always excitatory. Which means you're always starting with depolarization. Graded potentials, as you know, you can get a hyperpolarization, go from rest immediately to a more negative value, no depole at all, just straight to hyperpole. We've covered the handout for sure. Questions version of the study guide, covered a lot of the physiology.
We've spent too much time on like the neuronal pools and all that kind of stuff.
Grain of salt, don't spend much time on that. How do testrototoxins and saxatoxins disable neurons from generating action potentials? At the very end of chapter 11, you have the table 20, the figure 40. You go through and look at the different steps of synaptic activity that can be affected by drugs, toxins. And some specific examples. There's your answer right there in the title of the slide. Testrototoxin, saxatoxin, they block voltage gated sodium channels. So if these are pain fibers, they can't transmit pain signals to the brain, so no pain. Numb. What would be the consequence if somatic sensory neurons were affected by these toxins? Somatic sensory neurons. You don't feel anything. Whether it's pain, or temp, or pressure, vibration, touch, whatever it is, you don't feel it. How about if it's somatic motor neurons that are affected by these toxins? Paralysis, can't signal the muscle to contract. The benzocaine and the orage gel, numbing the gums of an infant, same idea, blocking the voltage gated sodium channels.
The difference was the toxin was irreversible, right? Whereas like, that's why they use orage gel and stuff, because it's reversible?
Well, I think it's all reversible, it's just how long does it take? I don't think any binding is permanent, permanent. How about listing the steps of synaptic activity, often affected by drugs, neurotoxins? What's the first thing you have to do at the synapse to get that neurotransmitter released? It's really where we started with muscle contraction. Action potential has to hit the axon terminal and open the voltage gated calcium channels. So imagine a toxin that either opens those channels artificially, just opens them, without an AP coming down. Now you're releasing neurotransmitter without being signaled to do so. Or blocking calcium from coming in. And there are some that allow the calcium to come in, but block it from binding to what it binds to inside of the axon terminal to get the exocytosis triggered.
And that's like the black widow venom?
So black widow venom causes massive exocytosis.
Oh, that's right, okay.
When it comes to muscles, with paralysis, we always think you can't contract it, but a muscle stuck in a contracted state is a type of paralysis too. In particular, when it comes to breathing. So if your diaphragm can't contract, or if it's stuck in a contracted state, either way, you're not breathing. either way, you're not breathing. So they're equally dangerous. And that's how some spider venoms can be lethal. They can cause the diaphragm to essentially cramp up. Can't relax. How about curare? Tubocurare. It's a toxin that's been used for centuries. I think Native Americans used it to take down large prey, put it on the tip of the arrow.
It's the opposite, what inhibits the acetylcholine?
It's a receptor blocker. So it binds to the acetylcholine receptors and doesn't stimulate them, but simply blocks ACH from binding to and stimulating them. So there's two things that can happen when a chemical binds to a receptor. It can simply block the endogenous chemicals from binding. That's an antagonist, a blocker. Or it can mimic the endogenous chemical in the body and not only bind to it, but stimulate it as if it was that natural chemical. That's an agonist. And as you'll see, when we get to chapter fourteen, a lot of the medications that we use out there are either stimulating or blocking autonomic neurotransmitters. So that's acetylcholine from our parasympathetic fibers, norepinephrine from most of our sympathetic fibers. And we have many drugs that mimic those chemicals or block the binding of those chemicals. So a term you might see is sympathomimetic. That means it's mimicking the neurotransmitters used by the sympathetic division. It's giving you the same effect. For example, when norepinephrine binds to beta-two receptors in your airway smooth muscle, it causes bronchodilation, improves breathing. Albuterol, the fast-acting inhaler that many of you probably have used or have on you. That's a beta-two agonist. It's mimicking epinephrine and norepinephrine. But another way to dilate the airways is to block the action of acetylcholine, which constricts airways. So that'd be considered an antagonist or a blocker, parasympathetic blocker. And that can cause dilation too. In fact, a lot of the long-acting bronchodilators, often used for COPD patients, act by blocking the effects of the parasympathetic division. Whereas the fast-acting rescue inhalers, as they call them, is mimicking sympathetic. More about that in chapter fourteen. So with those steps of synaptic transmission, you've got the exocytosis of the neurotransmitter. Then you have the binding of the neurotransmitter to receptors. And then where the neurotransmitter binds, you can either block, which is antagonizing, or you can bind and stimulate, which would be an agonist, right, for those receptors. Right? Let's take seven minutes? Or zoom to twelve?